Good evening. Is there anyone here for public input? I need you to, if you're here for public input, yeah, if you can come to the podium. Give us your name, address.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, city staff, my name is Don Meredith. And I'm here to represent the one hundred and sixty-six residents of Windsor Green Senior Apartment Buildings and Willow Park Senior Apartment Buildings. I know it's difficult. Everyone, we have to, we have to provide taxes to provide services. But after looking at this levy, we oppose this levy. Last year, we took an eleven percent hit. And this year, we are now proposing a seventeen percent increase to our property tax. That's a twenty-eight percent increase in less than a year and a half. Because we're still catching up to last year's eleven percent because we work on annual leases. And now, these taxes are going to go into effect and be payable in May. So, we have increased our taxes on these two buildings. Fifty-five thousand dollars in less than a year and a half. And I think that's a kick in the head to these residents. Most of our residents are on fixed income. They're fifty-five and older. They're seniors. We're looking at a twenty-eight percent increase in taxes. When you're looking at social security, it's a two and a half percent increase this year. I mean, we got, we can't sustain this. Something's got to be done. So, on behalf of those residents, we would oppose this levy.
All right, thanks. There is a public hearing coming up, uh, a little later on, and that was preliminary, uh, budget. We did cut some of that out of there. Is there anyone here for public input? Anyone else? All right, review and approve council agenda.
Move to approve as presented.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Consent agenda items. Item A, approved business license renewals. Item B, approved twenty-twenty-five landscape coordinator agreement. Item C, approved part-time custodian. Item D, approved twenty-twenty-four write-offs. And item E, approved selling excess public works and city hall equipment.
I would like to pull D.
B?
D as in dog.
Oh, D as in dog, okay.
N E?
A, please.
All right, somebody want to move to approve B, C, and E?
So move.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Mike, number A.
Um, just if you're, uh, when you're looking at this list, and I did call Adrian on it, is, um, the yellow ones are the ones that she would like us to approve tonight. The red ones, um, still are lacking information. Um, just so you understand, because uh, you'll see about three of them here that have the red line through them. And if I'm right, we're waiting for more information and possibly have them licensed by the first. If they don't get that in by the first, does that mean that they cannot operate them?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, no, Mike explained that perfectly. Um, you approved most of these at the last council meeting. There's just kind of a few strikers. So, the yellow is what I'm asking for approval tonight. And the red, I'm still hoping to receive something, or they may just not be renewing for twenty-twenty-five.
Okay. Just so you understand, that's
Yep.
lines are about.
Want to move to approve the yellow ones?
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Frank, item D.
Yeah, we're writing off a generator expense to Viking Coca-Cola.
So...
Is that?
So, what happened was, um, I want to say a couple months ago, part of a power lot pole, like, this sounds crazy, but fell off. So, it was just hanging. And so, we lost power to the water treatment plant.
Okay.
So, this required Tyler, one of our, um, I can't
Yeah, let me take it.
You go.
Yeah. So, it was, uh, over the weekend, we felt that it was an accident by Viking Coke drivers that knocked the power pole, knocked the generator, or the transformer off, which put our water plant in standby generation mode.
Okay.
Which needed to be monitored, because I don't let that thing just sit down and run by itself. I can't remember how many hours it ran, but it was quite a bit. So, this cost was for his time and the fuel, and then a, and a, basically a rental charge. Because we felt Viking Coke, it was negligence on their part.
And it wasn't.
It wasn't. It was just a
And we didn't borrow them the generators our own for our plant. Okay. I'll move to approve item D.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. All right, regular agenda items. Item A. Soon as I get it up here. Modern technology has taken my computer into the graveyard.
Yeah, apologies. I'm not, uh,
All right.
the normal person for this.
Please take notice that the Wade Park City Council will hold a public hearing on the second day of December twenty-twenty-four at six-thirty P M or soon thereafter to consider the twenty-twenty-five. Nope, this is the wrong one.
Yep.
No, I can read.
This is, this is a currency one.
This is the currency one.
You got the other one?
I have.
Go ahead and read it.
The Wade Park City Council will hold a public hearing on its budget and on the amount of property taxes it is proposing to collect to pay for the cost of services the city will provide in twenty-twenty-five. The proposed twenty-twenty-five budget is thirteen million, two-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars. The proposed budget represents a five-point-eight percent increase from twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-five. The proposed twenty-twenty-five tax levy is eleven million, nine-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand, eight-hundred-and-eight dollars. The proposed tax levy represents a nine-point-eight percent increase and a proposed tax rate increase of four-point-eight percent from twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-five. The public is invited to speak.
All right, it is, uh, six-thirty-seven. The public hearing is now open. So, if anybody would like to speak on that subject, again, I need your name and your address, please.
Uh, Ralph Regelman, three-twenty-four Victoria Lane, Windsor Green Edition. Uh, I look at all that stuff up there, and what's it really all meaning? Is our taxes going up four-point-eight percent?
Yes, on a, and it's looking at about, on a two-hundred-thousand-dollar home. If that's what your property tax is worth, it'd be about a ninety-six-dollar increase. So, based on that.
So, most of us in Windsor Green are on social security. That's going up two and a half percent. That's where you need to be. That's too high. We're opposed to that. And I have some additional questions on, um, the amphitheater. I went through your budget. I have a copy of the budget was online. And I see that we have costs for the amphitheater. Are we a hundred percent reimbursed for that amphitheater? That's the two individuals running for mayor told us that the amphitheater costs us nothing.
You're going to see on the, with the amphitheater, you're seeing just the expense side of it. On our revenue side of it, yes, any, um, we are billing back to New West, the management company. Um, we're getting reimbursement for a lot, a lot of it.
All this? All this?
Any of the national acts?
Yes.
Yeah.
Also, some of it we're paying for, though.
You're paying for the Rivers Edge baseball fields. You're paying for the community park. You're paying for Giallo Park. You're paying for any park facility. But anything that's with the ledge, that's a national act, is getting reimbursed.
So, how do we see the revenue part?
That will come out with the, um, with the budget, um, document that we get approved at the December sixteenth meeting. That will be in a separate, we'll try to get it in there, but it's, the revenues are in there.
It'll be online.
Yes.
So, we can see it. Okay?
Yes.
Then on our engineering, I see we have a million, seven-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand dollars in construction costs. Where's that going?
That's paving your roads over.
Roads.
But we have no, we have no five-year plan. We don't know which roads.
Yeah.
That's part of the
I also, I also seen in there in the proposed first budget, there was three-hundred-thousand dollars in there to pave the old public works building.
Hmm.
The parking lot of the old public. In your first proposed budget, I seen that in there. Are we planning to do?
I don't think so.
No.
I don't think it was in there.
That wasn't in there.
Nope.
So, why are we hanging on to that old public works building?
First of all, we may use that in the future. Second of all, if we sell it, it's, it's never going to be, we'll never have it. Uh, it's not costing us anything at this time. We have, at first, we had it for sale, not officially for sale, but we've had feelers out there a few years back, and nobody's ever offered us any money for it.
Well, maybe you should put it out for sale.
Pardon me?
You should maybe put, list it for sale. Self-for-bids. I mean, we have enough land.
Once we sell it, we lose it. It's gone. Uh, nobody's, it's, it's in a restricted area. There's only certain uses that can be used for it out there. And right now, it is being used.
So, we're getting rent money for it?
We are.
To pay our expenses?
Yeah.
We are getting, yeah, reimbursed.
That building cost us nothing.
You don't, you won't notice it from the out, from the exterior, but yes, it's being
Other than leaves and brush?
Yes, the inside of that building is, is full, to the brim.
Okay, so when I see the revenue side, I'm going to see that there's rental coming in on that.
No, you're not going to see a whole lot of revenue there. If we charge rent, if we charge rent, then it goes on a tax roll, and then you will see a negative, because you're going to pay taxes on a building that the city owns, which is stupid.
But we can make thirty thousand dollars right now in that building by taxing it, or just, the two buildings to the west pay sixty thousand dollars in taxes just to Wade Park.
You will see it as a, a donation. Um, that's how it's run through, a donation that covers the, um,
So, Central Care has it?
Yes.
Yep.
Yep.
That covers your, um, utilities.
Utilities.
Well, they pay also all of the utilities every single month on it, and then give us an additional donation. They pay all the utilities on it, so that is not an expense to the city.
But it's going to require repairs down the road, so we're going to get, if you hang on to it too long, you're going to be fixing stuff.
Well, we just, we just did fix the roof two, a couple of years ago, and we still had it, so.
Yep.
So, it should be in very, very good shape for a long time.
So, okay, my next question is, how much was like carryover from twenty-three budget?
Twelve.
Into the twenty-four budget?
I don't have that on top of my head right now.
That should give you a good reason, or a good parameter of why, where your, your, uh, levies going here. If you have money left over from twenty-three going into twenty-four, you should have some twenty-four to go into twenty-five. That number should be close to the same, year to year. So, I want you to, I want you to look at that.
Uh, let me explain some of that. The money that we had left over twenty-three to twenty-four, a lot of it came from our PD because of the staff. Wasn't staff, so that amounts that were left at the end of the year got carried over. Same with twenty-
Because we're short staff.
Because of the, the forecast. We have to forecast, I believe it's twenty-three men, so we have to put that in the budget.
Put that in the general fund, then, and then
It is put back in the general fund. Some of that is spent on maybe some projects that we couldn't get done, if I'm right.
Right.
Uh,
It goes into our reserves.
Added expenses from different departments that went over a little bit.
So, how much reserve we got?
I couldn't give you a number right off the top of my head right now.
So, we got some, though?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, we have, we have to with our audit, and our audit is telling us every year, we need to keep those reserves up. Where, this last year, it was down a little bit. We need to keep building tho, that up, so that's part of it, too. When we're, when we're rolling money over, it's to build that reserve. Because if we had a dire emergency, we got to have money in there.
It, it's just like many things. The state is handcuffing us. They're telling us what to do.
Yeah, kind of like you're telling us what it's going to be.
But you're not telling us what to cut.
Yeah, we need to know what to cut.
Yeah.
Well.
Please.
I mean, I, I, I've sat here for thirty-three years on this city council, and I've never had anybody tell me what to cut. I mean, do you want to cut a fire truck? Do you want to cut a, cut a police car? Do you want to cut your road plowing? Do you want to, I, I don't know what you want to cut, and I'm not trying to be
People to do that. Last I looked, we're paying these people, and you chose that job to do it, so that's part of your job.
To do what?
To stay within what we're asking you to do, two-point-five, the cost of living. That's what we're, that's our request.
What, what are we, what do you want cut? Everybody wants more money. Every, and cars, police cars are now, are not ten thousand dollars anymore. Fire trucks are a million, one-point-two million, one-point-five million. A, a public works, a snowplow is a quarter million, and that's not even doing anything with it. So
Car cars, I think, a hundred-and-thirty-four thousand, no.
I don't, I don't know what the
Security check's going to go up two-point-five. Half of that, they're probably going to take for medical costs, or at least a percentage of it. What do you want me to do at my place? I have my place for sale, and the biggest complaint I get is it's, the taxes are too high. I pay ten dollars. With your proposal, I pay ten dollars and fifty-one cents a day. Per day. Think about that for a while. That's what you're asking for the residents of Windsor Green. We are taxed a lot. And people across the street from us with the city of St. Cloud have point, have point-five-oh. You know, so I think you guys got to be realistic about what to cut and where to be.
And I think somebody needs to tell us what to cut.
Yeah. I think we pay you to do that job. That's my opinion there. That's what we're paying you to do.
Some of those other cities also get LGA, a lot of money in jail, LGA. We don't get very much.
I think your neighbors across the street get, how many?
They're being subsidized by at least fourteen million.
Tens of millions, tens of millions.
This other, uh, you're going to tax us eighty-five thousand dollars in a special tax deal, and it has to do with businesses. You know, the thing about taxes and being in business, they can raise it up. Menards can raise the two-by-four up a buck, and they'll, they'll make a buck, and who's going to pay for it? People live here. So, they have the chance to make all this back. We don't. Maybe you got to look at something different. Maybe people that have residence get taxed at a different rate than people in the business, because they can make it up. We can't. We're stuck. That's what I want to leave you on.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? It is a public hearing.
Red Mockers, thirty-seven Waterford Lane, Windsor Green. Um, I want to cover a couple more, a couple of points that, uh, Ralph covered. Um, you talked about the ledge being self, self-sufficient. Certainly, that is something that we're very interested in, that it is being self-sufficient. Because as residents of this city, we got no input before that was built. So, that was stuffed down our throats, and we are watching it very close. So, when we see line items in the budget for the ledge, that raises our, our questions. Why is in the budget any money for ledge in the budget?
We have to show it as a budget item. We also show it as a revenue. It's no different than, than the police, than a water.
When we see that, we will believe you, Rick, okay?
Look, look, look when we send out the revenue.
When we see it, we'll believe it.
And it's just like any other park. Any, every park in the city of Wade Park costs you money. Every, every park, and that is, and that is a park, and that ledge generates millions of dollars for the city of Wade Park in, for their businesses in their local surrounding area.
Forget about that, sorry. That doesn't help my taxes, okay? It might help, it might help that, might help that.
In a way, it does.
In a way, it does. It fills the motel, it fills the motels at night.
The hotels, and hotel motel tax, all that, the, the money's being generated from that.
That's going to reduce my tax burden, then.
If it wasn't there, it may go up even more.
You can say all you want. What we're looking at is our tax dollars.
Right.
You're looking at a five percent increase. Just as Ralph said, my in, my raise from social security went two and a half percent. They're going to take at least a percent away from me. So, I have to live on a percent, percent, percent and a half. Why can't you live on a percent, percent and a half?
Again, I'm going to
Inflation.
As Ralph said, that is your job.
I'm going to ask you, what do you want cut?
You want, you want, you want to come and join us? We'll sit down, and we'll start going through line item by line item. Don't be smart with me.
I'm not, I'm not trying to be smart with you.
We're telling you.
We're, we're asking honestly.
But I'm asking you what you want cut.
That's not acceptable.
I'm asking you what you want cut out of that budget.
Rick, I did not sit down, line item by line item, and say, well, this is a good one, this is a bad one. You want, you, why do we need another, a brand-new fire, fire truck? Am I against the fire department? No. First question is, why do we even have a fire department? We talked about that before. So, why are you now buying a new fire truck?
We're not. I'm, I was just a comment that new fire trucks cost one-point-two. We are not buying a new fire truck in today's world.
It was a suggestion.
Okay, all I'm saying is
Let me help you out a little bit, okay? I know we talked about this several times. Um, one fact that Bart, uh, Carla brought up was our LGA. If we got equal to what our partnering cities have,
Mm-hmm.
we wouldn't have this big of a rate.
So
We have to make up what we lose from the state somewhere, and we're trying to do our best to keep the roads in shape, our infrastructure. Um, we got other problems coming up in the future with our water and those types of things. Like I said, LGA is one of them. The amphitheater. In some respects, I can understand and agree with you, but we, in this last year, renegotiated the amp contract. Getting a much better deal. We may end up paying maybe a two percent cost for maintenance on a park, which Rick brought up. It is a park. We do have maintenances in the park. Um, you know, you got grass mowing, that type of thing. The rest, from what I understand, now, I don't think we've signed that contract yet. It's not finished.
Not quite.
Haven't.
But we should, uh, to me, I'm looking at getting ninety-eight percent of what is spent out there repaid from the, the people that are going to manage those shows out there. And thirdly, on the amp, it's, Rick kind of said, yes, that amp provides a lot of revenue for our, and supports a lot of our local businesses. We get the half percent sales tax, which helps to pay for a lot of the things that we could be taxing for, but are receiving that half percent from eighty percent of people that don't even live here. So, those are some of the things.
Thank you for that. So, that, that gives me two, so now you fed me with two things.
Okay.
If an amphitheater is such a moneymaker, then why isn't it running more than a dozen times a year?
Oh, this year, they're planning twenty shows.
Oh, twenty? How many, and then, how many, so how many days of the three-hundred-and-sixty-five days is that?
Well, it's only the summer months, so
Why is it just the summer months? And why is it just on the weekends? Why isn't during the week?
It is.
It is.
All during the week. You got seven days a week. Why isn't it running seven days a week? If it's such a moneymaker for this town, such a moneymaker for the, for us, us people that live here, then it should be bringing down our taxes if it's that big of a deal. Then have that sucker running all the time.
Because national acts don't travel like that.
Well, then, why did you build a damn thing if you can't run it more than twelve, twenty times a year? Anyway, so, you talk about bringing revenue into the city because of the ledge, and it helps the businesses, then those businesses should be helping us bring our damn tax dollars down.
Businesses pay more, they pay more than you do, percentage-wise.
You're not listening to me. You're not listening to me, are you?
I don't know.
I guess not. I'm listening to you, but I can't do what you're saying. I can't shift that big a chunk of the tax burden.
Then why was the ledge built then? If you can't run the ledge
Wait a minute, you're just jumped subjects. We were talking about taxing.
You're saying, you're saying that the ledge is, is a moneymaker not only for the city of Wade Park, because maybe it doesn't cost us anything to run it, but it helps the businesses stay in float, making money for the businesses.
Yeah.
Right? And you get this half a cent sales tax.
Yeah.
Okay, well, then bring more, more acts in, so we get more revenue, so our taxes come down.
That's what is happening.
We got a five percent increase this year. If it's making so much money, why do we have a five percent increase?
We can't make money off that ledge, like you, like you're saying, anyway, the state
Then why did we build a damn thing?
State of Minnesota, the way it was, the way it was bonded, says we can't make money for
Then why did we build it?
Because it's a hell of a draw to the city of Wade Park.
Okay.
You don't think that Rivers Edge Park, these Little League fields, don't, they cost us a couple hundred thousand dollars a year?
So, how, okay, I got a question for you. How much more the Little League, uh, field's going to cost us next year to maintain than they did last year?
More, more than, more than the ledge.
No, you didn't answer my question.
I don't know that, top, top of my head.
Well, you should know that question.
It's a park. It costs money.
You just told me that it costs money to run the damn parks.
It does.
Then tell me how much more it's going to cost me next year than it is last year.
Ten percent, probably.
Yeah.
Oh, now you're just throwing numbers out.
Well, that's as good a guess as anybody's.
We don't know how much
You're going to, you're going to pass a budget, and you don't, you don't even know what it's going to cost.
I can't pass the budget next year for last year's money. I got to pa, I got to pass budget for next, for this coming up year.
You should know, you should know what the maintenance costs are for a park.
Well, we do.
So, you should know what it costs in twenty-twenty-three. And now, you should know it's a line item in the budget that's going to cost X amount of dollars more in twenty-twenty-four because we're getting a five percent increase. I'm no, I'm no finance scholar, but to me, you look at a line item and say, twenty-twenty-three costs us this much. Twenty-twenty-four is going to cost us this much. I need an increase. Is it one percent, zero percent, because there is no increase, or is it going to be five percent?
It's going to be five percent.
I think you're asking me, you're asking me to speculate You're asking me to speculate fuel costs and them kind of things in the coming year.
So, you're saying it's going, if the fuel costs aren't going to go up more than five percent? You're speculating that they're not going to be more than five percent. So, come on, come on, come on. I'm not stupid.
Just tell us what to cut. Besides the ledge, it's already built.
Then you and I sit down, and we'll sit down, and we'll go line item by line item. Windsor Green will gladly sit down with you and go line item by line item. We'll tell you what you can cut and what you can't cut.
Send it to us.
No. No. Do your job. Brought up LGL.
LGL.
And LGA, whatever it's called.
Our job.
Whatever it's called. We have, for the last two years, asked you, the council, the city administrator, why we don't get it.
Because
What?
Oh, go ahead, finish it.
They say it's a formula.
That's right.
They say it's a formula. It's so complicated, nobody can tell us how it works. Okay?
Okay.
We don't, come on. There's a farm, there's a formula out there that says, it's so complicated, you, we can't tell you why you're not getting the money. One reason is because we got so many businesses compared to our residential.
That's right. That's correct.
What are you going to do in twenty-twenty-four to get more residential?
You tell me where to put it, and I, I don't, we're trying to do that. We've got to, we've got to, we've got to
What I heard, what I heard from the, from the two mayor candidates was, you're going to put a strip mall out by the ledge, and you're going to have half of it, it's going to be on the top, it's going to be residential, it's going to be commercial on bottom.
The city owns no property.
I was there. I didn't hear that.
The city puts no pro, has, owns no property to put residential lots. We don't have any. And we can't make you, we can't make
I didn't say that the city was building it, did I?
We can't make the farmers build them either, or sell their property.
Okay. Whoa, where's Don? Don could do it.
He left. He could.
He could.
But he hasn't.
He's a developer.
So, that was one of the statements that, that was made, that how are we going to grow the city of St., uh, city of Wade Park?
That's right. That's a good question. We're trying.
Residential.
We're trying.
We don't need any more commercial.
We're trying.
We need residential. So, what's your plan?
The plan is, you got to have somebody that wants to sell their property.
You need a developer with deep enough
Then what are you doing?
Let me ask
Putting the word out.
Hey, Frank, hold on. Since I've talked to you guys and Ken.
And, and Ken did too, yep.
We have okayed for our planning department to bring on another person to help him in the planning and the promotion of those areas.
Which is gonna cost the city money, which I have to pay for as a, as a, as a resident.
Everything costs money.
Can I finish talking to him?
Go ahead.
If we get that planner and if things go the way the new council wants it to go to, hopefully we'll get a developer that will come in to develop the areas that we have available, which is, you probably know is, is mostly in the southern part. Did I agree with bringing him on? Maybe at first I didn't, but at the same time, if he's gonna help get these areas developed like you're asking, it will be a win-win. But I've also talked to some contractors and there are some problems developing residential in some of these areas, St. Cloud, White Park, St. Joe. And I'm not gonna go into what was brought up. Hopefully we can overcome that, get a developer that's willing to hurt. We got probably 150 to 200 acres of area that can be developed for housing, um, those types of things out south of town and they're nice, nice little pieces. And like I said, hopefully with this new plan for '25, we can get that off and going and get this push to get those areas developed. And also at the same time, try to business and residential kinda go together. Help develop a few more businesses that will help.
I don't care about businesses. I want residential. I wanna bring residential in so we can get some money from the state.
Hand in hand. If you got good residential, you can attract businesses down the road.
Yeah.
So hopefully we can get this residential problem squared away, work with the planner to work to get this done. We got a new comprehensive plan now. We got a new strategic plan that will help drive that, I hope, to a, a, a contractor or someone who is willing to come in and develop those properties for those people that have them for sale. That's what I can tell you at this point.
So.
Hopefully the new council that comes on can help drive that with our planning department so that we can get this going. I mean, we've been stagnant for shit, too many years.
So when this is done, how are you gonna communicate the results to the city?
Hopefully, what do you mean getting done?
Well, you got this plan that you're gonna, that you're spending money on. This guy's gonna, he's gonna come up with something and say, here, here's, here's your, your feather and your cap, do this.
Let me, when we come to planning on those types of areas, we've always uh, made the developer pay for those types of fees.
No, 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 you're, you're missing my point, Mike. What are, when the results come in, how is that gonna get communicated, communicated to the city, city, the citizens that are paying for this?
Right now, we are working on a program that hopefully will roll out the beginning of the year. And it'll be an email alert system that you can sign up for. So we'll have, uh, basically a monthly newsletter along with when something like this comes out. Here, here's a link. Jump on it and you can read about it.
Think again. Simple answer. Communicate to the citizens of White Park. It just hasn't been done before. My goodness. Amazing. Something so simple as an email. I'm sorry. Two years ago, I sat with most of you over at the park shelter saying, communicate with the citizens of this, of this town. Since then, there's not been any more, any different communication than it was two years ago. Except when we get this and all of a sudden we get our gander up a little bit because it's a half, it's, it's increasing our taxes again. And as I said before, you're gonna tax us out of White Park. Just as Ralph said, nobody wants to buy his house because of the taxes. Is that the only reason? May or may not. That's one of the first things that they say. The taxes are too high. You gotta stop someplace, sometime. You have to stop. You can't keep on raising our taxes because we can't afford to live here anymore. What are we?
Seventh highest tax in the state?
In the city.
In the cities, or?
Sterns County.
In Sterns County, we're the seventh.
You're number seven.
Number seven. At least the good thing is we're not number one. You gotta stop. You gotta stop. We can't afford to keep on living in the city of White Park. I can move across the street for a whole lot cheaper money. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Anybody else?
I got one more question if I can.
Sure, public hearing. I need you at the microphone though, so they can get, so I can hear you.
Okay. This LGA we keep talking about, are we the only city in the state of Minnesota with this problem?
No, there's about 20 of them.
20.
So why aren't we working with the legislatures and trying to correct some of this?
Every year, every, every year we tried.
We have a local guy here. Have you talked to him about it?
Yep, you bet. Yep.
Couple of years, we didn't get anything. We are starting to get some.
For many years, we got nothing. Now we get what, 400,000?
Yeah, about 400,000.
But there are some of these cities around here getting 13 million.
St. Cloud.
Well, yeah.
13 million. If we had that, we'd look pretty good too. If we got 5 million, we'd look pretty good.
I always said the citizens of White Park pay their share. I mean, compared to how that LGA breaks down. Whatever we do, the citizens of White Park pay more other cities, it's significantly less.
So it's a thing called change. We need to go after the government, other forms of government.
And part of that formula dates to 1939, I think. So it's a problem. But it.
You have lobbyists you hire?
I can't imagine what's gonna come out of that group, but.
Do you hire lobbyists to work on that too, or we don't do that in White Park?
There are lobbyist groups, but that we use for other things.
Well, Sterns County used to hire lobbyist people to go down and work on those things. And maybe we should.
We hire some for some things.
We're, we're.
They're all aware of the problem. At the Capitol.
We're asking you to fix it.
Yeah, we do every year.
By telling us what the cut's not what we're looking for. We're looking for a smaller increase within our budgets too. You talk about budget, budget, budget. We have budgets too. We're not fortunate enough like the working people, when you go to the bank and you take money out of savings, they go back to work the next day or the next couple of days, they can put some back.
Oh, it don't work that way either.
We take it out and it's gone. It's history. You can't keep taking our history away.
Tom Johnstone, 437 Wellington Circle, Windsor Green. Your line item for administration is a little over $1 million, 10% of the property tax. How many positions is that?
In administration?
You have a little over a million dollars in there.
Eleven.
Yeah, I was trying to call it too, but.
With the building. About 11 in administration.
And what, what positions are those?
We have a finance director, city clerk, city administrator, couple of admin associates, payroll, um, payroll and HR.
Utility.
Utility billing.
Yep, utility billing. Uh, accounts payable, finance, another finance person, um, John in planning and zoning. And we have some building inspections that are part of that, that department too.
So that just covers what you currently have? And you're talking and bringing on another person?
No.
Not in.
No, that's a part-time person.
Not an admin.
Through a, another company. They won't be city staff.
Well, there's one spot you, you seriously need to consider is, do you need all that administration? Cause that's pretty expensive. So there's a spot to start looking at the cut.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
Brad Mockrul, uh, 37 Waterford Lane, Windsor Green. I forgot one thing. Um, in the budget, they have 1.3, uh, three heads for the ledge. Is that accurate?
Yeah, what?
1.3 heads, employee heads for the ledge. Is that accurate?
Three employees.
1.3.
Employees for the ledge.
There's one.
There's one. There's, there's one, but I suppose depends on part-time ones. I don't know. In the summertime, Bill?
Nope. It's, it's one full-time employee and then I believe 5% of my wages go towards that, just 5% of it.
Point three is coming from probably.
I don't know where that.
So we do have a, a head for the ledge?
Yes.
Yes.
Which we were told on the front end, there would be no added heads for the ledge.
It's the same one it's always been.
There was no.
But most of her wages.
Yes, are reimbursed.
That's reimbursed.
Thank you. They get reimbursed.
Yes, they do.
Anybody else? Anybody else? If not, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, public hearing is closed at 7:10. That is not, we will not vote on the public, on the budget, uh, the budget meeting will be, or the budget will be approved at the next council meeting, which is December 16th. All right, item B, public hearing, Unbank. I was reading that before. Where do we go with that one?
I'll scroll down, see if I can scroll into the notice right here.
Ah, here we go.
There we go.
Please take notice that the White Park City Council will hold a public hearing on the second day of December 2024 at 6:30 PM or soon thereafter to consider the 2025 currency exchange license for Unbank Company LLP located at 147 Division Street, White Park, Minnesota pursuant to Minnesota Statute 53A dot 04. Anyone wishing to comment on the license renewal thereof should attend above stated time and place, dated the 18th day of November. It's 7:11 and the public hearing is open. Is there anyone here to speak at the public hearing for Unbank? Chief, do we have, we don't have any problems over there, do we? We never have.
It's been very quiet for at least the last six or seven years.
Yeah. All right, somebody wanna close the public hearing?
A motion to close the public hearing when it turns to 7:12.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. And I need a motion to approve the renewal of license.
I'll move to approve the renewal of the license.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Item C, request to vacate public right-of-way, First Street South, Martin Marietta. The White Park City Council will hold a public hearing at City Hall, 1913th Avenue North at 6:30 PM or soon thereafter on Monday, December 2nd, 2024 to hear the request of Marty, of Meridian Granite Company, Martin Marietta, to vacate the following public right-of-way. That part of First Street Southwest formerly known as Maple Avenue is dedicated on the plat of White Park according to the recorded plat there of Sterns County, Minnesota described as follows. Bounded on the north by the south line of block 46 of said White Park and bounded on the west, on the east by the southerly, southerly extension of the east line of said block 46 and bounded on the west side by the southerly extension on the west line of said block 46 and bounded, bounded on the south by the south line of the northwest quarter of section 17, township 128, North Range 28 West, said Sterns County, Minnesota. Anyone interested? Invited, is invited to attend and, or send written comments. And if you know where that is by that description, you're way better than me. It's really on, it's really on the south side of what was known as Barts Park.
Yeah, well, this is the easiest way to show it here instead of the survey. Uh, council members, this is a request uh, put forward and, uh, from Martin Marietta was the initiator that coordinated with us, uh, over the past several months, regarding the area of Barts Park. And this is one of the aspects that came up. Martin Marietta owns property on all sides except the 13th Avenue south side. It makes sense for the city, uh, to look at vacating that. Uh, technically, we would have to maintain it right now if anything goes wrong. Uh, plow, uh, that, those sorts of things. This is one way to save some potential expense. Um, basically, it's kind of a de facto driveway for, um, Martin Marietta and they're looking to kind of secure that with some, uh, maybe changes in operations. There are some uh, different things going on over there in the, in the next two years. They can touch on here with their, the next item. Uh, but we're supportive of that. We haven't received any objections. Uh, we would need to retain an easement. We have some, uh, water and sanitary sewer in that stretch. Uh, we can certainly prepare that and have that recorded, but, uh, Martin Marietta hasn't objected to that at all. So uh, this is one of those few instances where we have a pretty good public stretch that, uh, makes sense to vacate and, and turn over to the surrounding property owner. In this case, it would go solely to Martin Marietta. Typically, you vacate an alley yourself, but with, uh, different owners on either sides, it gets split and then they have to figure out amongst themselves if one person gets it or they split it evenly. This would go solely to Martin Marietta because they have that property on all sides.
All right.
John, I got a question. Do we, does Martin Marietta own that baseball field or do we?
No, Martin Marietta does.
Yep, that's theirs.
Martin Mari, oh, okay.
Yep.
Yep. Is there anyone else to speak at the public hearing? Somebody wanna close the public hearing?
Move the clue, close.
You wanna speak or are you happy with what you just said?
I'm happy with what John said. He said it better than I could have.
Martin Marietta guy, and he wasn't gonna say anything unless it went solid.
That's right. Uh, we, what's now become Martin Marietta bought, had Barts Park beginning in the 40s or so and has leased it to the city um, up until a few years ago and we said we're gonna take it back, so.
Right.
Just to answer your question.
Doesn't get used?
No.
Anyone wanna close the public hearing?
I'm going to close.
Yeah.
7:16.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. And a motion to vacate that piece of property?
I'm gonna motion to vacate First Street South from 13th Avenue West to existing.
Sure.
Yeah, existing boundary.
Martin Marietta property?
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, item D, five-year CUP review, North Quarry, Martin Marietta.
Uh, council members, I'll, I'll lead in and Martin Marietta staff can, can kinda take it from there, but uh, you may recall that for the North Quarry, uh, under an older conditional use permit that, uh, is before my time and maybe before some years, there was a, uh, clause in there that every five years, they had to basically, um, come back for a, a review by the planning, or excuse me, by the city council. Uh, doesn't necessarily require a planning commission review. We did review it, uh, a couple of years back because it was being done in conjunction with the amendment at that time. Uh, but really it's more for informational purposes, um, kind of a touch base what's going on. Uh, staff has not had any issues or concerns with, uh, anything going on at Martin Marietta. They've always been excellent to work with. No, no complaints received on my end. Uh, we could turn it over to, uh, Jim and, and team to, uh, touch base, um, just a couple of minutes and welcome to give any information you'd like to.
Thank you. Um, yeah, basically that, um, over the last five years, we've been operating as we always have. Crushing granite, um, and hauling it out of the North Quarry. Um, that's our plan for the next five years as well. No changes other than kind of eliminating the inefficiency that, um, First Street South caused. It's been fenced off, it's been gated off, um, to kind of further secure the property and keep those that aren't supposed to be in there out. But yeah, we're just here for the review to answer any questions, um, myself or my team back there. Can answer any questions that you have, but, um, looking forward to operating as we always have for the next five years.
All right.
Council got any questions for him?
Nope.
Staff would add that, uh, we would, I didn't put it as a resolution for, uh, action item tonight because this isn't, uh, this is kind of a one-off item that it's more informational. You don't necessarily need to take action on it. Um, but if there's a comfort level, if, um, the Martin Marietta's applicants prefer to have a resolution for their records, um, I would probably draft one up and, and put it forth for, uh, signatures and approvals if, if you wanna make it as a motion like that, that you uh, accept and approve the, the five-year review.
Would you like that?
We'd prefer to have a.
We'd prefer to have a formal resolution just for our records. I'll move to what John said.
Whatever. I'll second whatever Frank said.
I have nothing to read.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, approved bills.
I'll move to pay the bills.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Dave, you got anything?
No, sir.
Chief? Bill?
No.
Chief? Avery?
No.
Carla? Anybody else?
I do.
Nope.
Okay.
Well, I was kinda surprised in our workshop. But I would like to take this time.
Don't cry.
If I can.
You can.
We knew we hired her for a reason.
I've given fifty-one years.
Can you do it, Mike? Otherwise.
I don't know. I've given fifty-one years total to this city. Worked with the police department rescue squad for twenty-one. Um, worked on the park board. I've worked on the planning commission. I've worked SPASTOG as president for four or five years. But just like to thank the citizens of this town for the support they've given me in the last twenty-four to twenty-six years on the council. Like to also thank the administration. I think we've got a, a very good administration here. We've got good workers. They're willing to stay. And I hope everybody appreciates them. And for the new people coming on, one suggestion, don't be afraid to speak up. Don't be afraid to ask questions. That's the only way you learn what's going on. And like to thank the present council for putting up with all my crap, so. Like I said, I'm not one to be afraid, but I would like to ask maybe to get onto that empty planning commission uh, position that will be coming up shortly, so. Um, with that, I'd like to thank everybody, the citizens, the people I've worked with. And salute. Goodbye.
All right, thanks a lot, Mike. All right, with that, anybody else? John, do you have anything?
No, sir.
All right, with that, congratulations on your here's a service mic, and we are adjourned at seven-twenty-three.